Thank you so much for joining us this evening for our March 8th Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll get started with the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our March 8th Board of Education meeting. We are holding in-person meetings here in the middle school multipurpose room. As is the case with the entire school district, our Board of Education meetings are now mask optional. For the time being, we are continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube Live. I'm going to keep my report brief as we have a number of presentations this evening, but I wanted to tell the community about some recent work that has been going on around the RYE commitment. Over the last few months, the district has been working to identify examples of what the RYE commitment looks like and sounds like in classrooms. For example, what does it look like when teachers teach critical thinking skills? How do we recognize when students are applying those skills? What does student collaboration mean within a classroom context? And what learning opportunities do we need to be offering students in order to foster that collaboration? Thinking deeply about these questions together with our teachers and students will lead us to the necessary steps we need to take in order to reach the ideals of the RYE commitment. We began in December by bringing together what we call the RYE Commitment Leadership Group, consisting of administrators, staff developers, teachers, and students. The group began by talking about what critical thinking is, and then created a Critical Thinking Learning Walk tool for determining if critical thinking was present in instruction and in student thinking and discussion. The group convened this past Friday to test drive the tool in classrooms. The group divided up into teams of three and went into K-12 classes across the district, across buildings, to see if the criteria in the tool were observed. At the end of the session, the group reflected on the tool and their experience of engaging in a learning walk with their colleagues. They concluded that they all enjoyed being able to see instruction in different buildings and across content areas. They also appreciated the K-12 aspect of the work as a means of uniting the district around one common focus. They also discussed the effectiveness of the tool and potential modifications. Moving forward, this Critical Thinking Evaluation Tool and others to come will be used as a method of professional learning for teachers to think more deeply about their practice and student learning. It's very, very exciting work, and I just want to commend Tricia and Brian who stepped in and led the work on Friday, but it's really been an exciting process to see this develop, even though we had a couple of snow days get in the way and rescheduling. I'm really looking forward to the next session. Switching gears a bit to everyone's least favorite topic, COVID. I'm so pleased that Governor Hochul has at last decided to use health metrics in making COVID mandate decisions. This is something that the board, thank you very much, myself, and many of our parents and community members have been advocating for for some time. The Monday after our midwinter recess, the governor announced that regions with low COVID risk could go mask optional in schools two days later. We had held one final parent-university readiness session with Andrea Miranda, a licensed social worker from our partners at ESS, and the mask became optional on Wednesday, March 2nd. Just huge thanks to Erin and Tricia again for setting up the sessions. I know some of you were able to attend. I found them to be very helpful and supportive to families as they were having these conversations at home. I would say that at this point, even in walking around today, about 15% of our students and faculty are wearing masks and about 85% maskless. And it changes. I've seen people in masks some days and not others, and it's a perfectly individual decision. And we've continued to reinforce the need for everyone in our community to be respectful of others' decisions around masking. And that definitely seems like the conversations have happened at home because that has been heard loud and clear, and you don't see those areas of concern that we considered may be possible. So thanks to all the parents and the kids for those great conversations at home. And our COVID numbers continue to be low. I'm very happy that tonight's message was a no... it was a non-message. It was a message saying we had no cases since the last time we reported, and we've only had three cases in the last week. We've changed our case reporting from every other weeknight, from every weeknight to every other weeknight, and we're planning to switch to once per week before we cease reporting altogether in favor of using the state dashboard that Caitlin magically made appear on our website where you can find all of our data. And we will, of course, announce any changes to the community in advance of making them, so keep an eye out on that Friday update. We distributed more COVID test kits to district parents immediately before the winter break, only to be gifted with 6,000 more by the state. We gifted some today to the RYE Women's Club. Sarah and I had a chance to visit with them today at Christ Church, and I've reached out to community groups including RYERec, the RYE YMCA, the RYE Free Reading Room, the city, our local preschools, and offered COVID test kits. I know one of the preschools is taking us up on it, and the two boxes that I set aside for them, I think Sarah might have put another one or two there, but we have a lot of COVID tests. But seriously, in the meantime, if anyone in the community is in need of COVID tests, please come to the district office or give us a call. We will set you up with them. We have stacks of them, and we're finding new closets to put them in, and we want them to be useful to families, so they are available in the community. So that being said, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne. And just one other thing to add, we did have a board interest meeting here just prior to our meeting starting tonight where community members came to learn about Board of Education service. So there's lots of information also on the website about that if you were unable to make tonight and are interested in finding out more. So as you said, we do have plenty of presentations that we're having tonight, so we can get moving. Are we starting in order of what's...
Yes, I believe technology is the first for this evening.
So I will turn that over to Caitlin first?
Absolutely.
Yes? Okay.
So welcome, everyone. Tonight, we're going to be talking about some of the highlights for the Technology Department, some of the projects and overviews of things that we've done from the summer throughout this year, and then what our goals and plans and budget overview are going to be for the 2223 school year. All of our work is deeply ingrained in the RYE commitment, making sure that we have a secure, robust infrastructure that can support all the teaching and learning that's happening across all of our classrooms. So tonight, just to give you some highlights of what we've done district-wide from an infrastructure perspective, as you know, this is something that's really important to us. We always say several years ago, our infrastructure wasn't where it needs to be, and we worked tirelessly to make sure all of our five buildings are up to capacity. So some of the work that has been done district-wide is that we've really worked to virtualize a lot of our storage, increase some of our storage space for what we have on our servers, working to increase our bandwidth district-wide. So we have two internet providers that we run as a redundancy in the district, and so now we are running two times the bandwidth that we've done in the past. The reason for that is the amount of increase that we have in mobile technology across all of our buildings, K-12. And then we've also had the opportunity this summer with all of the construction that you'll hear from Mr. Gignano in a little bit, is the rewiring. So since our buildings were upside down and inside out, we had an opportunity to rewire Osborne in particular, the Milton Library, the Midland Library, and then the gray boxes. So this was an opportunity for us to take our cabling from Cat 6 to Cat 6A to just make sure that we're future-proofing all of our schools and making sure that the speed and capacity and efficiency is there for what we're running across the network. At Osborne with that project, you'll see in one of those pictures is our new server closet, and Rob has a picture of what it looked like before. It looked that pretty, with all of our wires coming through, but that was all the work of our IT teams, working to replace our core switches, cleaning up these closets so that our cable management is very efficient now. Everything has been relabeled and just making sure that we have the controls in these spaces that we need. So all of our closets right now at Osborne are appropriately equipped with AC equipment, temperature controls, monitoring. And when Dr. Byrne asked me the other day, "What's a leak rope?", if you weren't aware. So a leak rope is a rope that we have above our closet that detects any water damage. So if anything is leaking from the ceiling, we will get alerts to say, "Hey, you need to go in and check that closet." So making sure with the amount of new equipment that we have in these spaces that they are appropriately stacked with monitoring so that we know what's happening when we are not present in the room. And then at Osborne School, we also had the opportunity, since we were able to work in all their ceilings with our wiring, is to upgrade our FM systems. So those have been systems that have been outdated over a period of time, and so now we only have a few more classrooms left, but those classrooms are up to speed, which is really helpful. In the past, we were used to moving equipment around based on student need, and so now that they're outfitted in all the classrooms, it just makes it an easier transition for students that may come into the district or may change classrooms for a particular reason. We don't have to wait to get the technology there, it is there. It was also very helpful with the pandemic with COVID and wearing a mask, so it may not just be from a student with a disability that needs an FM system just for voice projection in itself is really helpful. So that is a practice that we are looking to go across the elementary schools, but Osborne School was our first work in that area. And then at Osborne and the high school, we were able to replace all of our access points. And again, this is an upgrade that we're future-proofing our buildings with the amount of mobile technology that's coming across our campus, that our new access points are able to sustain the efficiency and the connection capability that we need. In addition to not only our infrastructure, we've done a lot of work in terms of the security highlights across the district, and so security is another facet of the Technology Department, and it's something we take very seriously. So district-wide, with all the construction work that we've done across the district, we wanted to make sure with our cameras, while they were new and beautiful, that they did not get damaged during that construction phase. And so we were able, over the summer, to take everything down, even though we had just installed them, package them up, and make sure that, once the construction was done, we were able to reinstall them. So now we're at a really good place. As sites come online and spaces are available, we are able to put our cameras back online, which has been really great. We've enhanced our Salto locks. You know, classroom door access is something that is coming into the district, and so in the next couple of months, starting to pilot this at one of the elementary schools so that you can use your ID cards to get into your classrooms, and we start to eliminate the amount of keys that we have coming across the district. Salto locks are at all of our main entrances, and so we're just kind of keeping consistency across all our platforms in our schools. Our security vestibules, as you can see, are coming online nicely, so those have been outfitted with updated wires, the Salto locks, and then also our Raptor Security Management System that we currently have, so that'll come across the five schools. We've also done a lot of work in cybersecurity, so just making sure that we have endpoint detection and responses in place. So we use a system, Fortinet EDR, that just runs and monitors and scans our systems all day long to make sure anything that is downloaded or installed, if it's not appropriate, we will get flagged, and the entire IT team will be alerted right away to say, "Is this something I should let through or something I should pull back on and we investigate?" So with all the cybersecurity that's coming up, we make sure that's at the forefront, really looking at our NIST cybersecurity standards and framework to make sure we're touching on all those points. As you know, we've added more standards to the plate, but it's really just to make sure that we're running a safe school environment. In addition to the framework, some of their daily practices that we do as a team is we have what's called PM tickets, preventative maintenance. So with the help of Edjatech, who is our IT consultant, we have PM tickets in our help desk tickets, some weekly, some monthly, that help us to go through different closets, different systems, different servers, check backups, make sure things are running consistently, making sure security systems are running. I know our administrators appreciate the first Wednesday of every month. We actually test all of our 911 systems, and we work in conjunction with the RYE Police Station, and so we will call them to say this is a test, and then our administrators will get a text message, alert on their phone, and email. And so we make sure that everyone that is working all the time, so we do have these PM tickets in place to make sure that everything is functioning as needed. So it's a really good test for us, even though it beeps really loudly. It's definitely efficient. We also do a lot of audits, so sometimes people get scared by the word of audits. I take it as a work of professional development for our team. So over last summer, we actually joined an audit with Google to help us kind of go through all of our systems, look at mitigation, look at users, look at access, how things are set up, making sure we have the most secure system in place. And so through this audit, they were able to go through our systems and then provide us with some professional learning and updates in terms of things that we're doing really well and other things that we need to improve upon. And so that's been really helpful anytime we have an opportunity to work with someone to kind of review the whole pieces of the puzzle, to say, "What's working out well?" We take that opportunity. We've also this year done a lot of work with Safe Schools, so working with Dr. Ahm just to make sure not only are we having the normal, you know, bloodborne pathogens training, but that there's a lot of education law 2D training out there for teachers. And so now that is a requirement for all of our faculty and staff to participate in, this is a way that they can become knowledgeable in that area of data privacy and personal identifiable information. So our teachers had an opportunity to participate in those sessions on the beginning of the year. And then we are working on, we just presented this to our administrative team, which was a long PD session, but we are working on a security manual. With all of our systems that are in place, we want to make sure the end-users understand their functionalities and efficiencies and how they should be working. So we've worked at a team to spell out all of the systems that we have from a security standpoint, how protocols should be run, what does something look like in my building, who do I contact, how do I contact that person? And so we worked through it as an administrative team, and now we are getting ready to share it with our faculty and staff. So for example, in that administrative manual, it will talk about our Cisco phones in every classroom. So what do I do with a phone if I have an emergency? How do I handle it? Who do I call? What are the top five extensions that could be accessed, you know, in the schools? So these are just a lot of information that we want to make sure everyone has access to, so we've put this manual together. So once we think about all of our infrastructure work and the security piece, if that, I would say, is always stable and efficient, then this is where the fun, creative pieces come inside. And as much as I love the infrastructure component of my job, nothing more is rewarding than seeing instructional technology integrated in the classroom with students. And so this is the fun piece. I always say, if we can keep the lights on, secure and stable, this is, you know, what's really successful for kids. Last year, we had to make some quick shifts, or two years ago, with the pandemic on what our device structure looked like in school because we were running either a remote schedule or a hybrid schedule. And from there, we learned very quickly that there's power in having technology as long as we're using it purposefully and meaningfully. So keeping our device structure from when we went to COVID is something that we've done. So we have shareable carts at the K-2 level and to 5. We do have our one-to-one Chromebook initiative in the buildings. This year, we've opened it up to parents and students to say, "If you don't have a device at home, and it would be helpful for you to complete certain assignments at home, you could take it home." For other families that have said, "We have access to devices at home, we prefer this to be in school," those children have left their devices in school. So we have it very open and fluid where parents can decide when they would like to take the devices home or not. In 6 through 8, we've continued with our one-to-one program, which has been running successfully for three years, where our students get a device, a charger and a case in August, and they use it throughout the three years and return it at the end of eighth grade. The reason they're returning that is because in our high school, we have our BYOD program, so all students are allowed to bring in their device, not a cellular phone, even though they can use that for other things, but not instructional. They can use an Apple, a Mac, a tablet, an iPad, it's up to their preference. We try to keep all of our platforms web-based friendly so they will run across multiple systems. But in addition to that, we always want to be mindful of any student that needs accommodations for assistive technology, then the technology is provided for them in working with Dr. Breedenberg on what those accommodations may look like, and also for our students who need to loan out technology. If they do not have access to it, we do have a loan program here in the district, so they are able to sign up either for a hotspot if it's internet access at home, or just a device they may need for the year or a semester base. So with all of that, from a student perspective, we also learned through the pandemic, the amount of technology that we are using in schools now, which is great, wasn't very effective as much as we'd want on a Chromebook for a teacher. So we did a lot of work last year, as you might remember, as our technology committee, to really pilot and review several different devices to see what would be the most effective in a classroom. And so this year, after doing all of that legwork with our teachers on the committee, we had narrowed down our focus to the Microsoft Surface Tablet. So this August, we were able to outfit our administrative team, our teachers, our nursing staff with these new tablets, and that was our Phase 1. So you'll see later on tonight, when we look at the budget, Phase 2, and our durable line is covering our elementary teachers. One of the great things with this tablet is that we've been able to set up wireless printing to our copy machines, and our copy machines have secure print. So we're not printing to classrooms, but we're being more robust in printing to copy machines, which has the security piece to it, so you can punch in your PIN code and then out the documents come, which is great, especially at the secondary level where a lot of our teachers are working in department offices and not so much as individual classrooms because they rotate so often. So that's been really helpful for us and helpful in our long-term thinking when we think about printing and what that structure should be here in the district moving forward. Software, we continue to use Google Enterprise, which we have brought on into the district since the pandemic, which has been great. We're still running virtual meetings, we're still using all of our Google Suite, but that is something that has been an increase. While Google is free for education, the Enterprise prize is a paid subscription because of all the additional features it adds for us. And then linked here in the presentation, we do provide our teachers with all of our tools that have been Ed Law 2D approved from the K-5 or K-612 perspective. So there are two resource guides that we send to all of our teachers, and this document is constantly fluid and changing throughout the year. As teachers recommend or fill out a survey for us in terms of software that they'd like to look into, we have to go through the Education Law 2D steps to make sure it is PII-friendly and it is approved, and once that's done, it will transition to this. So this is a great way for teachers to go. If they're thinking about lesson ideas, if they're planning together, if they're new to the district, "Where do I start?", this is a guide for them to think about ways how they can integrate student voice, choice, and different technology softwares into their curriculum. And then with all that, we want to be mindful that we have added a lot of technology, a lot of security items and infrastructure to the district, so how do we support everyone in using it? And so Edjatech has been amazing in terms of helping us with our Mojo Help Desk. That is for faculty and staff to submit tickets every day, all day, even when they're home. I know the name is very funny, was not created by us. In addition to that, we are also continue to run, which we have major success with, is our Student Help Desk 612. So as students come into the district, they learn to be advocates for themselves, they learn that they are either part of a one-to-one program or a BYOD program, and they need to let us know what type of support they need, whether it's from an infrastructure standpoint or instructional technology, the help desk is a place where they can tell us what those needs are. And then we continue to run our Parent and Guardian Help Desk, which started during COVID, and that has traction every single day, which is great. So our parents know they can reach out to us, nothing too small or too big for us to jump on a call. And when we are working with parents to go through those answers, it's either via an email or setting up a quick Google Meet with them to see their screen, to troubleshoot, and to help them. So those three help desks have been very positive for the district. Some of our professional learning that has happened is throughout the year, we're fortunate to be able to provide opportunities for in-service classes either before or after school. So our tech coaches have partnered with other staff developers in the district to run several of these courses. When we're not teaching courses either before or after school, they have been really successful this year in working towards a coaching model where with Dr. Murray, setting that up in terms of what does coaching look like in our district, how do we work with teachers to plan and to prep, either co-teach with them, just watch them in the classroom, give them feedback, and so it's been a really good cycle for us to go through to kind of see long spans of instruction happening and where we can provide those supports. If they're not doing a coaching cycle, they're doing maybe small groups. Those are other ways that they're meeting with teachers throughout their day for our instructional coaches. We also continue to do our Tech It Out bulletins. We're handing on Year 5 with those, but those have been really helpful. We think of them as professional learning on your own, and so there's always facets. The one in the bottom corner was one of our months that we did a Tech It Out bulletin focusing on accessibility in the Google Suite. So what are some assistive technology tools that are available for all of our students? Speech to text, voice, Google Read and Write, all workshops that we've run in the past, but different bulletins to just highlight different features and accessibilities that are out there. We also do a Tech Tip Tuesday, so these are really small, just bite-sized pieces of PD that we can give to teachers every Tuesday that they can turnkey very quickly if they want. So this month, we always have a theme this month for March. Our focus is technology integration around SEL, so social-emotional learning, and every week, this is our second week, we've provided how to integrate that. So this board showcases virtual calming spaces, how to make calming spaces or different nooks or setups in your classroom that will allow students to just focus, relax, and be integrated in the work that they're doing. Some of the workshops that we've offered this year, not just fully technology-based, but really working to co-partner these sessions with our other staff developers. So we've done SEL in K-12 classrooms, amplifying student voice with audio and video, Show What You Know a book creator, and then we have a slew of summer classes that we ran, and also fall and the spring. We're also excited about the work that is taking place during Superintendent Conference Day, Curriculum Mondays, faculty meetings, or new teacher orientation. And our parent universities, so while we always try to educate our teachers and our students, we are also running sessions for our parents as well. Collaboration on this professional learning team is huge, and I'm so grateful to be a part of it because it's not just what this department's doing, it's what all of our departments are doing. So being on a professional learning team with technology, with literacy, with math, with special education, led by Dr. Murray, has really put us all in the same room to say, "What are our values?", you know, going back to that RYE commitment, "What do we believe?", and "What are we focusing on?", and just aligning ourselves with our work. So that has been really, really important for us, and to build these classes that have facets of technology in them, but good instructional practice as well. We meet as weekly as a technology team, again, to foster that collaboration. And then in addition to our staff developers, the technology team has also been working really hard to really look at our computer science and engineering pathways for K-612. So a couple of weeks ago, at Curriculum Council, we presented what these new pathways will look like for our engineering teachers, so we're very excited for a few new classes to come online. And then also working with our library media specialists to think about how their roles are shifting. In a few minutes, I will be talking about our new spaces that are kind of come online, and so how does their role shift so that we can utilize the spaces that we are about to open later on in the year. They've also done a lot of work around understanding the TC units of study so they can support teachers at the K-5 level in their classrooms, with picking different literatures, book recommendations, and also taking on more of a digital citizenship role. Again, wanting to make sure that the technology we're using in the classroom is purposeful and students understand how to be safe, how to be smart, and respectful to one another when using it. So our new spaces that we're so excited for, one of the biggest things that went into the spaces thinking about is, is how do we future-proof these spaces and also carry that vision into our classrooms moving forward? So as technology is changing, we want to make sure that we're keeping mobility in mind, that we have systems in place that spanned a variety of software, and we're not holding ourselves to one piece of equipment and one version of software. So we've done a lot of work around looking at what interactive displays we'd want to run in our new spaces, and also, like I said, future-proofing for our classrooms as our smart boards need to be replaced. And you'll see that in the goals coming up as part of a big take-on for the durable materials. So interactive displays are going to be huge in our media centers on our third floor and eventually in our classrooms. We're also looking at our immersive displays, which is a great way, if you've ever been in a large conference room, you can mirror your computers, your mobile technology, right to the screen. These immersive controls will have the same capabilities in that spaces. So it's a great way for students who quickly want to share what they're learning, show a peer or their teacher what they've researched, and not constantly having to go up to the space and sign out, sign back in, so just being very flexible with that in mind. Really looking at our mini-displays, so making sure that we are having the TV and the computer behind it, keeping wire management under control at all times, so it's a very clean, slick space. And looking at capabilities of having a docking station in some of our spaces as our teachers are acquiring these new tablets, being able for them to just set up their computers when they're in a classroom versus having always to log into a desktop computer. So just some future-proofing that we're doing in all the spaces. In our library media centers, I think this is one of the things I'm most excited for, is our kiosk stations. So having students in elementary school, teaching them, giving them the tools and the knowledge that they need to not only have the knowledge that they need to not only have book talks with their media specialist or their teacher about what's the right choice or what can I take out, but then having the ability to self-checkout. So really thinking about how to make book checkout more efficient. So we're not waiting online, we're not waiting for a media specialist, we're not waiting for the clerk to check you out, that there are going to be kiosks in this space, that with a little bit of teaching and learning and troubleshooting, students will be able to do some self-checkout. So we're very excited for that to start. Our maker spaces will be filled with 3D printing, and we will be working with Dr. Murray to look at some of our science curriculum and how we can look at some STEAM opportunities in that space as well. And as we said before, with the infrastructure, access points, security, mobile furniture, all of that will be built into the new spaces, as you can see from the two diagrams here. So we're very excited about these new concepts that we're building. So technology also covers data and communications, two pieces that we love dearly. So some of the enhancements are Jane loves data. Some of the things that we've worked really hard this year from a Power School perspective is pushing out a digital equity survey to all of our families to really make sure we understand what the need is in RYE and hearing from our families, hearing from our students about what they have access to and what they don't, so that we can better prepare for what type of technology is in our school buildings. So that was out in the fall and the winter, and we did get some really great responses from that. Our NWEA, state and local assessments are in our Power School portal now, so parents can look back to see at any time what those assessments look like just by logging into the parent portal and not another system. And then we are excited we've launched on the 28th, our new registration system, which has been really, we've gotten some good feedback from our parents with that. What we really enjoy with this system is it's not a separate system, it's fully integrated into Power School. So as a parent of a new student, you are setting up your parent portal account, your login information, and you're learning from day one what the portal looks like and not another system and then having to learn something else. So we're really, again, trying to keep in mind at all times how to be efficient and effective with our tools and making sure they're speaking to one another. As always with state reporting, there's numerous reports that our data team worked so hard on, but some of the big ones this year that we were able to accomplish was our yearly beds reporting, civil rights, that comes up every other year, which is a fun report, and then working with Dr. Ram and Dr. Murray on APPR Plan. And then some highlights that you, everyone has seen or heard with our communications page, so we are updating our website, our mobile app and mass notifications at all time. We are working with Colleen on our social media sites, which has been great. They've all been launched now, which is excellent. You can also find all the links on our website. So it's just been really great to see that take off and all of the feedback and the likes and the retweeting that is going on district-wide. And then our technology committee, right now, this, which is perfect timing, we've really worked this year on our committees to revise our technology plan. So the state is requiring that we submit a new plan for the 22-25 school year. And so all these things that we've been talking about, keeping up with the infrastructure, our security, our instructional technology, our professional learning, these are all things that we were working with the committee to integrate into our new plan. So we've had two meetings so far this year where we've had an opportunity to delve into the old plan, to look at goals, look at action steps, and thinking about what needs to be revised. So we've revised our goals for the upcoming plan, and in March, our focus is to actually plan out what the action steps are to meet those goals. And so we will be working very hard in March and April to do that work. The committee is required to submit their plan, our plan, to the Lyric on April 15th for the first round of feedback. And then at the end of the year, by March 30th, we'll be sending it up to the state for final approval. And then lastly, some of our goals for the 22-23 school year. So these are coming out of different parts of the budget. In the infrastructure and district-wide, we will be doing our Phase 2 of our Surface Pro devices, that'll go to the elementary teachers. So that is an online that's coming out of our durable materials. We continue every year to look at replacement cycle. Our replacement cycle is five years, but now that we have the option for elementaries to take their devices home and also our middle school students, as much as we give a case and a protection, sometimes there are some damages that occurs. And so we have to think about the year of the device, what our plan is to replace it, and what our warranty is. And so just looking at cost efficiencies there. While all of our middle school students do have access to one-to-one mobile technology, there are some specialized carts in our school because of our engineering and computer science programs in the middle school. So now that we have four engineering teachers, we have carts for each of them. This is going to be our last cart for our last teacher so that they each have their own spaces when they're designing and building and using the particular Project Lead the Way software that they need for their courses. So that cart will be purchased this summer. Also with all the updates that are taking place in all of our closets, making sure that we have efficient batteries that are running, making sure, as I said before, future-proofing all of our classrooms. We've come to a point where our smart boards need to be replaced. And so from testing the interactive boards that we've looked at with our design teams for the spaces that are going to be coming online, these are also boards that we've decided can be used in our classrooms. So there'll be consistency in terms of learning behind how to use a board, whether I'm in a media center in my classroom, and it'll look and feel the very, the same way. So those will be some boards that we will replace this summer. And then continuing to update servers in our SSM. At the high school, middle school, and our central office, we will be working on upgrading, I'm sorry, at the high school, our switches. That'll be a big project that's getting done this summer. And then at central office, just upgrading some of our access points so that they are mimicking what is happening right now at Osborne School. At Midland and Milton, we again are updating our core switches, we're doing our access points, and we're also cabling those two buildings. So future-proofing the high school, since we've done Midland, making sure that our district cross is the same on our cables, making sure everyone is on 6CAT-A. We are going to be re-riring those two buildings this summer. And then the following year will be the high school, and then we've future-proofed all of our school buildings in one shot. This makes the most sense, especially around construction, when we have access to spaces, and also when we're putting in all this equipment, making sure that we have the cabling to support behind it. And then lastly, our security and district-wide upgrades, and in Osborne School, we're looking to relook at some of our security cameras from the outside perspective that have better zooming capabilities, so we can see into parking lots and other areas where needed, continuing to increase our classroom door access with our ID cards. And then working Phase 1 is going to be redesigning our PA systems, and that's going to happen at Osborne School first, where we are going to have a centralized system working off of our phones that are in our classroom. So no longer will you need the button to call the PA, your phone in your classroom will do that. And also being able to branch out to call for emergencies if needed. So we're really trying to streamline all of our tools that we have available. So Osborne will go first with some setup and some testing, some feedback, probably some changes, and then we'll be adding that to the other schools as well later on. From instructional technology standpoint, just continuing to support curriculum instruction and goals within our district, continuing to evaluate the software that we're using. So as you can see, while COVID was not a thing that was, is great for the district, one thing that was, was all of the technology that our teachers learned to use and integrate in a meaningful and purposeful way. And so every year, we do work with our teachers to say, what's working well, what's not? There's a new software out there, we want to try this versus continuing subscription with this. We never want to be stale in terms of just going through the motions of rebuying. But we do have access to more technology than we've ever seen before from a software perspective, which is also an increase in our budget. Continue our professional development opportunities, coaching with our teachers, providing summer workshops, and also our student universities, which are some of the biggest ticket items that we do over the summer. We're going to continue to plan and unpack our new K-12 computer standards, computer science standards, excuse me. So this year, we've really worked with the team to unpack them, to look at them, to look at our course alignment, and we were then able to propose two new course offerings for engineering and CS for next year. We're going to go through looking at the classes and how they're running and then be able to make future projections and recommendations to you hopefully next year to even build out more classes. And then we are going to be continuing some work on our library crosswalk, which you've heard about, to really bring in some library skills into our humanities classes. And then also work with our elementary teams to look at our science, have a science committee where we can really look at the curriculum and the alignment with the CS standards to making sure we're touching upon the STEAM and STEM that's needed at the elementary schools. We will be redesigning our Innovative Learning Environments Fellowship. So we've had success in running that fellowship for four years, and it was a cohort that teachers could sign up if they're interested. And so now we're ready to take that next step and design and see how we can get departments working together during the day with our coaches and not just be an additional signup. So we're working to restructure that plan and that model a little bit for next year. Continuing though with active learning and PBL in mind at the secondary department levels, and then it really excited about showcasing and working in our new spaces. So we'll have our media centers online, our academy third floor, and the gray boxes. And then from a data perspective, our number one goal is always to streamline our data and communications, putting more things out there, being organized, being efficient with what we're sending out to the community, and then just working with the faculty and staff to making sure as changes with EdLaw 2D come around, that they are fully educated and aware as to what those changes are. So again, that we're protecting them, we're protecting ourselves, and we're protecting our students. And so from all of that, you get this budget. And so as we mentioned before, some of the increases in the tech equipment is going to be the purchases of the infrastructure, the servers, the switches that are happening across the district. Our software has increased based on how, what teachers are using in the classrooms. That has gone up significantly, K-12. And then our durables really hits on a lot of design items that touch upon the Phase 2 of our devices for our teachers, looking at our Project Lead the Way carts in the elementary schools, cabling, all of that. So if there's any, any questions.
Thank you. There's always so much happening with technology. And I, I mean, in the, the last two years, obviously, the, the concept of having a solid infrastructure around technology has become so important, and it, and it really does impact how you, how you, how you instruct in the classroom. So one of the things I heard you saying was with the library media specialists and having the kiosks and thinking about the time that that allows the, the library media specialist to be able to spend with a student rather than having to wait for students to come up and check out a book, you know, that, that creates another opportunity for there to be an, an interaction with a child that would not have been there before. So those are great things to, to hear. I, I think just overall, where I, where, as I was looking through the presentation and listening to you talk, is to just try and get a better sense of in the larger bucket items. I mean, I know you talked about the equipment being a variety of things, so, so there's, there's, I guess if you could help sort of compile or bunch some of that stuff? Like if we took the budget line and said, okay, this is, this is primarily what's falling within this bucket, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. So if we start with the equipment line, we are upgrading three core switches at the high school, middle school. And I don't know if you don't want pricing with those, but that's what comes in those lines. Our Midland Core Switch is going to be upgraded in that space. Our access switches, and then at Milton School, you have the same core and access switches that are helping, that are happening. So that's all of the hardware that's going to live in our server racks.
Got it.
That's going to run, run those two buildings.
And just to add a little color, so the definition of equipment is literally a single item that is $5,000 or more. So we have to differentiate those from an audit perspective because those are depreciated as, and they're handled differently from an audit perspective. So that's why there's a specific category labeled equipment. The other thing to keep in mind is if, in the event that we go to a contingency budget, equipment is one of the first items that is automatically removed from a budget when you're talking about contingency. So we're very specific and detailed about what goes into an equipment line because of those reasons. Your next item, and I don't mean to interrupt, but just to help, are durable materials. So then that classification is anything that is more than $500 but less than $5,000 that has a life expectancy more than a disposable supply. So the difference between a roll of tape versus a stapler, if you would. And that's where the differentiation comes in with your durables, equipment versus supply codes.
So then for, say, like the replacement or the, the addition of the tablets for the faculty, correct?
Right, because those are, are going in between like a, let's say, $1,200 range, that's in our durable line, because it's not $5,000 or more.
Great.
So mobile technology from replacement of mobile carts at the elementaries, the middle school, the Project Lead the Way, the teacher devices at the elementary, that's coming out of the durable materials line.
That's very helpful, thank you.
And that also helps that if, in the event that we are in a contingency budget, we still have flexibility within our budget to be able to still purchase the necessary items for us to continue in terms of being able to provide instruction. Because typically in the past, you would see items such as what we were talking about in, in terms of laptops and those individual items in your equipment line. But with the distinction with durables, you do have that flexibility and still have that buying power.
Got it. And the, the equipment pieces that are here, those were separate and apart from the capital projects that were happening?
Yes, yes. Anything related to the bond is managed completely outside of the general fund. This is our operating account. Anything capital and construction-related lives in our capital account, which is, this is the A Fund. Your capital account is your H Fund.
Just wanted to say it out loud.
If I'm reading this right, our budget for this year was 2.5, and we project, obviously there's still time, but project that it's going to come in at 2.25. Is that correct? So about 300,000 gap to the good side. What, anything that, what, what's accounting for, for that?
For the increase?
It's a decrease, right?
No, so you have to keep in mind that when you're looking at projected expenditures for the current year, it's a snapshot in time. So what, it's when this data was downloaded from the last time we did a check run, plus any outstanding encumbrances, which are basically all of our purchase orders that are outstanding that haven't been fully expended. So again, I caution you that you need to remember, it's a point in time.
So it's, to put that in my terms, it's more of an artificial expenditure, it's not Gabriella's.
Exactly.
Okay, then I won't, I won't go further down that line. But in, in, in terms of the storm damage, is there anything that would, that falls into sort of this category and is reflected in this budget? Or that's, or the stuff that was damaged isn't stuff that would fall into sort of like the tech budget?
Yeah, not stuff that we've, we've budgeted for.
No, you'll see throughout, and once Rob comes up, you'll see a lot of information that is labeled Ida and these one-time codes that we use. And as, as obvious as that, where you'll see a lot of information around those one-time codes that we use, but it did not fall within Caitlin's budget.
And that, that is all still in the, the claim process with insurance?
And that's why you'll see the COVID lines that we did have to create in Caitlin's budget have now been zeroed out because much of what was created or needed out of COVID has now become our new normal and has then been dispersed to maintain those systems or software or whatever that may look like, that has now been incorporated in our, in our regular budget codes, and we're no longer isolating them as COVID expenses. Some were discontinued because they were no longer needed, but ones that became our new course of how we function have now been incorporated in everything else. Because the other thing to keep in mind, the CARES money that was allotted for trying to, you know, help with the burden of the COVID expenses is not an option for next year. So those are things that if we choose to continue, have to become part of our normal course of functioning.
I have a few questions, Caitlin. First of all, thank you so much. First of all, thank you so much. This is so helpful and so in-depth. About the one-to-one Chromebook, I'm just curious, the K through 1, right now it's the shareable Chromebooks and iPads. Do you anticipate it staying that way? Or is our goal to get to a one-to-one device for those grades as well?
So we anticipate growing them out slightly so that we have more. We're doing some center work, some small group work in the classroom, but instructionally and appropriately, they're not needed in every classroom for every child all day long. So we find that it's appropriate to just have a handful of devices per each teacher so they can use them when needed. They are really important for us when we do like NWA testing. And so since we are well off in the other grade levels, that's when we, for that week or two, do some sharing with carts and we move them down. Students are still learning with our staff developers how to navigate those tools, you know, how to use them appropriately, how to type. But we want to make sure that it's age-appropriate when they're learning those skills. So I don't see us right now being one-to-one, but growing them out slightly in terms of replacement when needed, or giving an extra one or two to every teacher that needs for center or group work.
Okay, perfect. So it sounds like in terms of the Chromebooks, we're at a steady state almost of where we are. And you mentioned there's a five-year plan to rotate those or upgrade those or retire those. Did you, I might have missed it, is that in this, is this, what line item is that?
Yep. So that would be in our durables.
In the durables?
Yep, in the durable. So what we're doing right now at the elementary level is we started in the district several years ago with HP devices. And we learned very quickly that not having a non-touch device in a classroom was not good for our students at all. So we quickly transitioned to our Acer two-in-ones. So they can work as tablets, which is really effective and efficient for our younger students, and then as a functioning laptop for our older students. So we are phasing out the HPs, going more to the ACers. But we are also part of a program right now with Microsoft where we are piloting some devices that are new and coming on the market. So we're looking to see what all of our other options are later on.
And I would say the five-year replacement is important because you can't buy that number of devices at one time. So it's a certain number each year and you're replenishing those.
Perfect.
I can certify that it is highly amusing to watch young children not understand why daddy's computer doesn't respond to touch.
They don't enjoy them.
I just had one other non-numerical question about the gray boxes you mentioned and technology. Could you just expand on what will be, will you explain what gray boxes are for the public? And then what, you know, what you're envisioning?
Absolutely. So our gray boxes are going to be new improved where auditorium spaces are at Osborne and Midland School. What we've done in those spaces from a technology standpoint is re-outfit our projection system, our screens that are going to be in the space, the lighting that you'll, that you will see, and also adding the immersive pieces that we've talked about. So ease, participant in there can easily cast what's on their computers onto the screen, similar to what's in this room. Also looking at the audio component, wireless microphones, speakers in the spaces, that's all going to be outfitted in those new spaces when they come online.
But if we take the non-tech part, it's so they were, they could really only function as one thing, those auditoriums at both Osborne and Midland, where you could sit in a seat and watch a performance, or you could sit in a seat and watch the same 15 minutes of Frozen for indoor recess.
I'm well aware of that.
These are now multifunctional spaces that have technology, that have flexibility. So we could do a performance where the students are on risers at one end of the room and you have seats like a regular traditional auditorium would. Or you could do something where it's split in half. You could do theater in the round, you could do chamber music in the round, or you could have kids run around and have recess indoors instead of watching the same 15 minutes of Frozen. And it's got great, much better acoustics, or will have much better acoustics, just a space that can be used every single day as opposed to five to seven times a year other than indoor recess.
Yes. Great. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Related to the gray boxes and the FM systems, will the gray boxes be fitted with the FM systems?
Yes. We will put in, we're still working that through in terms of functionality because it is such a large space and zoning.
Right.
But that is something we're definitely looking at. Same with our library and media centers.
And then I see that you have it for the, for Osborne and Milton next year. Is the plan then for the following year to do it for the middle school and the high school?
So one thing that we work, and we work with Dr. Breidenberg on that, with the high school, middle school, is right now we're using portable towers and they can move very easily with the students. That is a model that we've had, that we've never had at the elementary school. So whether we're going to stick with that model or get some feedback from what we've had at Osborne, the remainder of this year, look at the elementaries and see if we want to bring that model up to the secondary level. So it hasn't been fully decided just yet. We do have FM systems in the high school, middle school for students that need them or faculty that need them. But right now, we're running two different systems.
Thank you so much. This is, I learned so much in this presentation. So I really appreciate all the detail. Just back to the durables, I know we've talked about it a lot, but the projected expenditure for this year is kind of also higher than the adopted budget for last year. And then we're increasing, so for both years, is that really this build out of the surface tablets for the teachers? Is that a big driver and maybe, I guess, bumping up the one-to-one Chromebook?
Yep. So it's all our mobile technology. And then it's also keeping in mind in the spaces that we're rewiring. So Midland and Milton, also the server equipment that's going to go in there, that's under that $5,000 threshold that we need. Our batteries that need to be replaced, our access points, our new versions that are going up there, those are all things that are coming out of the durables. In addition to like the interactive displays that we talked about, so the TVs. We've also budgeted next year, not only for the new spaces from the capital bond that are coming online, but our classrooms need to be future-proofed. And some of our smart boards cannot make it another year. And so we will be upgrading some of those spaces in our classrooms next year. We're looking to hopefully do about 10 to 15 TVs in those spaces. So that's all coming out from our durable, durable line.
Would you say that just next year, that that number should drop down? Because we've had this real big, large buildup of devices.
Yes. So we're hoping next year we've-
Have a five-year replacement coming in.
100%. So with all the server work and the infrastructure work that you heard tonight, we've then covered our three elementary schools. The last building that we will work on next year in terms of upgrading our wiring to CAT 6A would be the high school, middle school. But our infrastructure will be set across the board, year after year, constantly making slight improvements. But you will see the heavy lift happening between last year and this year.
So on the tech equipment, you have the high school next year.
Next year.
And that will be a little bit of a bump, but that will also sort of smooth down.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. And could you just spend a little time on the contract and consultant relationships?
Sure.
And sort of how you, you know, what those are? Because, you know, both of those, kind of between them, it's like a $50,000 increase, you know, which on the percentage base.
Sure. So I'm going to start with contractual, if that's okay. So our contractual runs our two ISPs. So we have LightPath and FirstLight here, so our internet service providers. And because we've upgraded our bandwidth from last year to this year, we're now running four gigs across the district. That has been an increase in payment to those two vendors. We are also in that line taking out our cabling. So going to the CAT 6, the work that needs to be done in terms of the teams that will be installing the cabling. And, you know, the CAT 6 will not only provide classroom to classroom, but also for phones and cameras and data across the schools that are being done. And then also at Midland School, redoing the fiber that's there for right now until we talk about future plans. And then also the fiber at Midland School. So it's between your internet service providers and all of the cabling work that's going to be done in the buildings at the elementary level. And then our consultant is, we do have Edgitech here, which is our onsite support IT staff. We have an amazing team and that is just an increase in days for some of our staff. So the amount of technology that we're running in the district from a security perspective, infrastructure, just making sure that we have the bodies on the ground to support it. I think one of the things we're fortunate in this district to have that a lot of districts do not is onsite IT support 24/7. As you can see tonight, they're here. And so that's a great piece for us, that our students don't have to wait, our faculty or staff, they are available. And they become a community with our teachers and our students. We don't have to wait every Wednesday to get someone to look at our tickets or, you know, 48 hours to come online. They're always here. So we figured if we're going to have the infrastructure and run it the way that we want, we also need the boots on the ground to support us in that way. So it was a slight increase in that FTE.
I've utilized a help desk and it's very helpful. So I appreciate everybody. So my final question goes back, I know Tom brought up Ida, but one thing I was wondering about is, I know when the flooding happened, going into this school year, we talked about raising up some equipment, specifically at the high school, because some of that infrastructure was at risk. Is that a question for the facilities team?
Yeah. So Rob's going to talk about that in his presentation. What we can say from the athletic weight room downstairs is we have been mindful in some of those stuff in that room that was on a lower level. And so I've been working with our staff on rewiring some pieces and getting it higher so that it, God forbid, doesn't happen again. But yeah, Rob will talk more about that component.
Not great. Thank you. Caitlin, I just have one final question. For the Salto, the door lock systems, how far into that would you say we are? Like in terms of having it be, percentage-wise across the district, having those be completed?
So we're starting right now one of our elementary schools based on construction. And then we're phasing in the other buildings. But I know Robbie is going to talk about that in terms of a timeline.
Okay, great.
I always laugh. He hangs the doors, we program them.
Exactly. There you go.
It's a good team. It's a great team.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you so much, Caitlin. That was fantastic.
Love the future-proofing idea. That's great. You should trademark that. And then let's get a Hyperloop between the schools. I think that's the next thing.
A Hyperloop?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think athletics is next with Susan Redulay. Hi.
Hi.
Thanks. A little taller. So thanks for having me. As my second year, I feel like now I'm a part of the budget officially, that I was able to take some time from last year and assess where we were at as a district and learn a little bit with what's going on and kind of make it my own. And that's thanks to a lot of people in this room. Obviously the Board for Supporting Programs, but Gabby is always a go-to and very helpful with that. So I appreciate that. A lot of this information, I also have to recognize Donna Sorkin, my administrative assistant, who is, I'll just in a minute say, do you have this report on how much we spent on this? And she just whips it out and there it is. So she's a great resource and I'm very lucky. When I started, you know, coming in and doing research into this position, thinking about the RYE commitment and what it stands for, I feel like over the time in this, into my second year, looking at some of these key components as we progress, I feel like it's more and more integrated into what we do in the world of athletics. And I can see clearly that the vision, when we leave these buildings and head out to our fields, that it continues. And I see it in many different ways and sometimes anecdotally where I just leave with a big smile. So we continue the goals. Some of these are repetitive from last year because they're still continuing. We did see an increase in some of our special needs population participating this year in athletics, which is, was a goal last year. We increased, you'll see a little bit later, participation. We had a ski team, which was, for lack of a better term, we followed another team's schedule. And we had this viable interest. When I first started, I first had a young lady come to me and say, Mrs. Zuley, I'm part of the ski team. I don't want to see it go away. If athletics happens, you know, can we make this happen? So my first year, we worked with the same model with Mamaroneck. And I could clearly see we had a vast interest of young people that were interested in a lifelong sport, which is the best kind really when you think about it, right? So it was really student-generated. Sophie Brett, who graduated last year, was a big spearhead of that. And some of our students, Cassie Page and a few other students, really celebrated that team and pushed it forward. So looking at it, and with the support of everyone, again, we had 24 students this year who participated. We did not budget originally for the coaching staff with that. So we had two wonderful certified coaches, went out, got all their paperwork, did everything they needed to do to be certified to bring this program to the next level. We had many students make it to sectionals. And I see this program just continuing. And I see Sarah's in the audience. Charlotte was a participant in it too. And I know that it was just fun to talk to her on our kids' growth. And our coaches are true know about racing. And many of our ski coaches in Section 1 take on skiing because they enjoy skiing, but they don't know about racing. And it truly is, it's a race sport. So that was pretty cool to see. Girls' ice hockey, you approved a merger this year, one of, I think it was about 10 schools we were a part of. And we had students that were eligible to participate in that. So great experience. I did debrief with some of our students related to that. And I was able to have a community forum with our younger population, kind of fourth through eighth grade. So we know who's in the pipeline and we make sure we're communicating on that. Multi-sport athlete tracking, we are in the process right now in my office to look at, we use a system called Family ID. And if you have a student that participates in athletics, you use this system. We are actually looking to potentially switch to another system. It's very similar to Family ID, but offers a lot more opportunity. Right now, our next steps is to work with Tracy Barnett, Director of Health Services, to make sure it's appropriate and it's a catch-all-to-be-all in a sense. Rob and I continue to work hand in hand together. We just met as early as yesterday with Luigi to talk about next Monday, the beginning of spring sports. Yeah. And, you know, I met again with Ryrec, continuing with Rob and Luigi to talk about field lining and porta stands and garbage pails and all these little things that happen behind the scenes that seem tedious. But when they're not happening, they blow up quick. So I'm thankful for that collaboration. And Luigi's done a great job at the high school, coming in and jumping into like chaos, which this building is super busy. So we continue to meet, continue to look at what's ahead of us and have conversation with Gabby about what that means dollar and cents-wise as well. I feel we'll continue to do different partnerships and some of them are organic and related to community service, such as when unfortunately Ida happened. You saw a lot of social media posts because that was driven by coaches, kids, community members, people just jumping on board. I feel that's a pretty special piece of this community. And we want to continue any opportunities we get to support those partnerships. Again, you'll see a budget transparency. This will happen every year. I think it's important to know what our cost per pupil is and it will be an average over time. And then this piece, secondary collaboration, not that I don't collaborate with the elementary administrators, specifically though, having Suzanne in place and Joe working hand in hand with some of the task force recommendations and things such as policy related to academic eligibility in the middle school and high school and how we can work together on that. We do meet regularly as a larger team and on a day-by-day basis. Anything that pops up, I'm very fortunate to have a great team and we want to keep moving forward. So again, this is an average. It's 2017 to winter 2022 because obviously we don't have spring yet. The numbers, I didn't put a little star there or anything, but I'm kind of moving away from COVID. So they don't reflect obviously seasons where we didn't have sport due to COVID. But we do continue to maintain a large number of participation. And again, I look at, we are one of few schools that offer two modified programs, which is huge. And if it's something that increases participation and keeps our kids active, it's a great opportunity. And I know I'm very thankful for it and the kids are as well. So you can see clearly Varsity, Winter, Spring, JV, Modified, those are your teams that are not duplicate teams. And your Modified red and black. And the reason why we segregate them by red and black just is simply because the numbers statistically come out through participation and there would be a difficult way to just lump them together. I want it to be true. Our facilities, thanks again. We were able to work toward a project. Rob has been great with us and very patient, as is Gabby, as we work through construction and different pieces that come up during the year. Our high school basketball hoops, if you ever really looked at them, they, I don't know the year on them, but they're old and a little antiquated as how the electric is set up. So we were able to work toward replacing them first in April, I believe, we were talking about with the electric and then over the summer, replacing all the hoops. Right now, the custodians will come in and have to hit several switches and it takes a large amount of time to take the hoops up and down. And this, actually, you could do one at a time, you can do a set group, and it will help enhance the gymnasium as well. So that's exciting. I was able to purchase a seasonal softball fence that will go up this year and it will, obviously, we'll continue to look at it. obviously will continue to look at it. We didn't want to spend a large amount of money on this because we want to continue to look at the field and not put anything permanent in because the field needs to be looked at as well. And you'll see that's in future planning. And we've discussed some of that and what that would look like in a scope and sequence. The fitness center is, was one of the areas that was affected by Ida. So we're continuing to try to push forward with that. We're hopeful this spring, we can open the doors and start utilizing the area a little bit more from between COVID and Ida. We really got hit in that perspective. And then obviously, you know, the field house is there and it's constantly looking me in the eye. And, you know, we want to start maybe talking to some community partnerships of what we can do with some of our facilities and how our community can support them. Student leadership, we continue to push forward on things on, you know, having conversations even on how we pick student leaders, our student athletic advisory committee. New York State Public High School Athletic Association is doing, continuing a conference in April, which we will have student athletes that are able to be a part of that. It's virtual. And I tapped a young lady on the shoulder who's a current sophomore to apply and a few others for a, there is a state organization, through the state organization, it's a student athletic advisory committee. And there's a rep needed for Section 1, a female, current sophomore. So I'm hoping that we might get selected for that and I'll keep the board and the community attuned to that. Continue, last year I had a wonderful senior intern, Amanda Lecaney. It's a great experience for her to see everything related to athletics and get her feedback. And she was huge in, with the student athletic advisory committee. So I'm hopeful this year that I'll have an intern again because it's always nice to work with kids, of course. The community partnerships continue to grow daily. I'm very fortunate. I was just asked this year to be on the RYE Youth Council Board. So I just attended my second official board meeting last night. So that's been a nice resource for me. There's other educators from our district on that as well. So we've kind of teamed up to look at how we can increase strategies and tools for our teachers and our coaches and our students related to SEL. So that, I know, has been very selfishly helpful for me too. RYE Recreation, Sally and Ricky and Greg and Aaron have been great. We meet all the time, as early as yes, or as late as yesterday, rather, just to make sure we're on the same page. We're constantly communicating about facilities. They do a lot here. We do a lot with them. And Eric's been on a lot of phone calls as well when we need to jump on. And I just am very fortunate for them because obviously without them, we wouldn't also have the spaces for our students. Continue to look at give-back days. You might have seen and heard of a lot of things related to different, you know, lymphoma clinics that a lot of our student athletes have come to me and asked to me, like, how can we support this? And they're student-driven, which I love. And anytime they're student-driven, right, we figure out a way, what does that look like? What do we need to do and how do we support that? And then obviously, any community service that we can jump on. We still need to do a better job of focusing. I feel like now we have some clarity of where we go on some larger scaled seasonal community service, like driven, not just small teams driven. So we'll continue to get better at that. So again, this is familiar from last year. If you recall, it just updated with the average students. So I had to take in last spring and fall's information and to make sure that this was accurate. It's broken down by cost-per-pupil estimate and it's been rounded up for the cost-per-pupil. The materials, again, are anything from uniforms to supplies to ice time, to facility rentals for things like swim. And then the coaching stipends are obviously in our EPW. And transportation can range depending on the success of the program, if you can imagine. And obviously, our scheduling. Our Section 1 schedules change all the time, our basic league alignments. And while we maintain a smaller geographical area, usually in our leagues, we do have to travel. So those three areas are averaged together, rather, added together and divided by the number of students on average that participate. And that is middle school, JV and Varsity. So middle school and high school combined. And because there's no breakdown of separate Modified and separate high school, it's all conducive to one large budget. And so you can get an idea of that. You'll see the football helmets are in there. I was thinking about when you mentioned technology and the, I'm like, oh, so you don't have to purchase large amounts of football helmets? But the good news is we don't have to purchase a lot of football helmets next year. But the tricky thing with that, I will say, is I'm going to order more than we would need on a shelf life. So 10 years from now, we don't get stuck with ordering that large number, but they do have a shelf life. So you can't order too many. And then, you know, they're not going to go to waste number-wise, but it's just, it's something that you want hopefully 10 years for the next athletic administrator. They can not have to order 10 or that many helmets. But we made it through. I was very happy with everyone's support in this room. Never again. So here are our winter sports. Pretty much for the most part, you know, our participation numbers maintain. They go up and down a little bit here and there. I was really happy this year with wrestling. We obviously, you know, we did our best to see if we could hold a wrestling last year and it just wasn't, it wasn't safe for us to do so. So this year, we had a new coach in Brian Share, a new math teacher. And he got a large number of students actually have come out. He's already meeting with me on Friday to discuss next season and how he can get more kids involved. Sally told me he's going to bring the RYE Wrestling Program back in, like, so there's some really good things happening. And so I was really happy to see that continue. Obviously, our numbers are high in most areas and we'll continue to monitor that. I always mention ice hockey again. The materials are, again, uniforms and things that I mentioned, but that's mainly ice time. And if you recall, the, we received donation from families for ice time percentage-wise as well. So that's not in here.
And our cheerleading squad, which became a competition team this year.
Oh, yeah. Well, I should have spoken about that. That's, unfortunately, I forgot. The cheerleading squad traditionally, so you have what would be known as fall cheerleading. It's actually called game day cheer now, which used to be called traditional cheer that's associated with usually cheering at a football game. In the winter, our cheerleading squad competed in several competitions in competitive cheer, which is the name of the sport at the New York State Public High School level. And obviously, they continue to improve and get better. It's something that's exciting to hear where it came from and where we are now. And I'm pretty excited. The kids, the kids have a lot of energy and are super excited. And it was fun to see them with their placement and just this, you know, the coaches do a great job with them on social media as well to promote it, which is huge because we're hoping our numbers continue and that the sport continues to grow. And then we have our spring. Again, softball continues to go down each year a little bit. If you recall, it was its highest because we had a large amount of work done on the softball field. So I can't recall where I dropped from, but it did drop because of the averaging over time. But that was something that was high, if you recall, last year as well. Pretty much self-explanatory, again, participation numbers maintain. Our tennis program continues to be the same. I'm looking now, because now I'm starting to look at the springs. I just pulled up Family ID to see how many kids were involved. And tennis, for example, was one of them. I looked and we were at about 40 students between 9 through 12 and any 8th graders that were looking to potentially come up. So that was good to see. Definitely would love to have middle school tennis, but it just, it really doesn't work. There are not a lot of schools in our section that have modified. Most are far in Duchess, so that's really not effective. And we don't have space. So we look at what we have and RYE is generous with us, but we struggle sometimes with timing because residents need the opportunity to play too. So with the numbers, we have to balance that. I called this new sports, but they really, maybe that's not the correct term, but I did want to highlight, as I did already previous to this, I just wanted to share with you because it's something that I think we should be very proud of, to have that 24 up there, definitely, and to look at offering participation for girls' ice hockey. There's a potential in the future, right now there are two teams. One is a Westchester-based team and one's a Rockland-Duchess team. And the population on both teams is pretty high right now. So over time, the goal is to get potentially another Westchester team. So we continue to grow the sport, which is nice. There are many sections around the state that have their own programs. That's something that would be way down long-term, but difficult to sustain for one school. So that's why the merger occurs.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
On the page before.
Yeah.
Is, is there a girls' tennis team?
Yes, in the fall.
In the fall?
Yeah.
I see you separated out. And then on the rugby, I'm just remembering as I was looking at this, that I think it was like the first board meeting I ever went to when I moved to town. There was a group of young women who were advocating for a women's rugby team. Is that also?
We have girls' rugby.
Okay.
It's rugby right now because it differentiates. So last year, we didn't have enough for a team, so the girls participated with the boys.
I see.
So right now, we actually have large numbers for girls. So, yeah. And in rugby this year, just a side note, we've went up a division. So we will be playing some strong national caliber teams. So we are scheduling with Coach O'Hara and we're trying to get some Friday games with some, some big games. So we'll make sure we highlight that. So we went up to a very competitive vision. So we're excited to hear that. So the breakdown, a couple highlights there. The athletic equipment. We've utilized a golf cart for, from some situations that occur usually related to injury with student athletes. Sometimes we have to bring some of our elderly spectators to and from. And golf carts traditionally, in my experience in the world of athletics, usually peter out quick, battery issues, whatever it may be. And ours petered out. And so this fall, when this was going on, we, it presented a problem, like a brand-new track, right? And somebody's injured on the field. And without that opportunity to have something to remove that student, you're bringing a vehicle down there. So we want to avoid that from not just the use of the track, but also it's panic moment, get everyone out of the way and it's unsafe. So that is to look at. And Rob and I have had some conversations and Gabby, and we've started to look a little deeper into how could we use that vehicle? So we're looking at like more of a UTV or a, like a gator, so that way facilities can use it when we're not using it. And that we can also maybe add any kind of extra equipment to it that we might need for salt, whatever it may be. So we want to get, you know, bang for the buck with that. So that's why you'll see an increase. Athletic reconditioning, I just put up a little bit more because we do obviously have more helmets and helmets have to go out. It is a mandate every year to be done. Some of the things that I did pull back on was it's not necessary to send every single uniform out to be reconditioned unless it's soiled, torn, like, you know, that's not necessary to spend that kind of money if they're coming back laundered and fine. BOSI services, so the BOSI service increased, there's a few things. Number one, we remain a little bit stagnant with our fees during COVID because of lack of sport. This is where we pay for officials' fees. We pay for our BOSI services fees within our section. We pay for our Family ID, all our COSER-related events, our huddle software, Local Live, our Armory bill, which is for use of the Armory, obviously, our EMS or EMT assigners for our hockey games, a load of issues. One thing that's not there and that I did want to highlight is the athletic trainer is moved to a different code. And that's where you'll see in previous budgets, it was there. I want to thank everybody and especially Gabby for the opportunity this year to hire our own athletic trainer and contract for a second. It's been a huge value and we're going to, I think, see the biggest value this spring when we have so many things offsite that we are participating in because of field spacing and facilities. So that, you know, we continue to monitor and we continue. Tracy and I are meeting with our ATCs this Friday, for example, to discuss spring. And we'll continue to work on our, you know, our whole health services project overall. But that has been amazing. I kept saying to Gabby that RYE has standards like I haven't seen before. And that's not a bad thing. But in order to meet those standards, you have to have the bodies to be able to do those things. So I'm very appreciative personally because I work with them so much after school and I know that our students are very happy to have them. And everything else is a rollover. I think we're in pretty good shape overall this year. We're able to replace many of our uniforms. I went out to last spring to speak to Modified Girls Lacrosse, who, one of them came to see me and they were upset with their uniforms. And I said, okay, well, come talk to me. And we went out to the field and sure enough, like their uniforms, they were older and they thought the boys were getting something. So we had conversation and we were able to get them uniforms that were appropriate. So I think we're in good shape overall as I've started to see what they look like and get an opportunity. So we're moving good with that. And looking out there, there's nothing really that jumps out that is exciting. Mine's boring compared to Caitlin's. But here you go.
I would say we did have a golf cart washed down from upstream with Ida, but it wasn't functional. Neither was the PortaJohn parts that came from upstream.
Any questions?
Well, thank you, first of all, Susan.
Of course.
For all of that. It's really been helpful to see this level of detail for athletics in the last couple of years. Sure. Because it just gives us a good sense of, especially the participation numbers, because it helps us see like how much students are engaging with athletics throughout the year. So it's wonderful to see that. Just quickly for the equipment piece, so that, the golf cart, that's, the cost is all sitting within athletics, it's not divided up?
No.
Because you're saying like maybe facilities would use it or something? This is the whole cost?
Sure. But it'd be primary for athletics.
Okay.
And so that's where I'm looking at, like if obviously during the year, it was necessary for them to utilize it, but in the summer months, for example, when we wouldn't be utilizing it, it'd be a great resource as well.
Right. Okay. Great. I don't have any other questions.
I had a few questions on the budget breakdown, if you don't mind. Just starting for the fall.
Yeah.
You touched on the football materials, the $29,000. Did you say a lot of that was the helmets for the, was it the modified teams that, so should we, should we expect that $29,000 every year?
It will go lower because of the cost of those helmets. So we, it was about $36,000, I think, we had to spend to replace our helmets that were rejected after 10 years.
Right.
So that's why it's higher. It will go down. Materials are uniforms, pads, helmets, shoulder pads, any of that to outfit our student athletes. That's where that mainly is coming from. So it would maintain probably a little bit lower, but not much because things continue to get rejected.
Okay.
We have to replace them. And our numbers are extremely high right now. I think this year, we had 105 at the high school and about 75-ish in the modified. Those are, you know, really good numbers, but very high.
Okay.
For a school our size, which is great.
Yeah. It's a good problem, right?
Yeah.
And I noticed later in our agenda, we're accepting a gift from the booster, the football booster. Just curious.
Great question.
Does that number, doesn't affect it?
Nope.
So if that went to, I think it said uniforms or something like that, how does that play into your?
So that's a great question because it's always a perception, right? So on different levels. So traditionally, our RYE Football Association, who's a 501(c)(3) officially now, would like to purchase uniforms for their children. So in order to do so, they must donate the money to the district for us to be able to purchase the uniforms through our vendor so that they may keep them. So we ensure that there are, we always, if any sport wants to have their own uniform they keep, for say, we have to provide a home and a way, no matter what. And if there's anything additionally, it's not something that, it would be something that they'd have to donate to do so. So that's what that is, is for next year's. And the reason why it's donated now is because if you don't order football uniforms, by now, they won't be here in August or September.
And in terms of the funding, when it comes to a donation, again, you're looking at funds that are coming out of our operating account or the general account. Any donations live in our OT fund, which is other, and which is where we house all of our donations. So those funds are not commingled with what you see here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Good question.
And then I think XC, I'm assuming that cross-country?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to check. And then... And then I had a question, when you mentioned ice hockey.
Yep.
And there's a girls, you talked about the girls team, but girls are allowed to play on the ice hockey boys team, is that correct?
Sure.
And do you think that that will change with the new girls? Is it kind of a different population?
Yeah, so I've experienced that in my time as an athletic director where some young ladies decide that they choose that they want to stay with the pathway. So it's a choice, personal choice, but you have to go through mixed competitions, which is a commissioner's regulation for female to participate on a male's team. So our young females that are participating, we had female wrestlers this year, we had female ice hockey players, they have to go through mixed competition in order to participate. So they can continue to do so. So they can try out if they make the team, for example, and be a part of that program or this is another option for them.
Okay, okay, great. And then we've talked about this before, but squash, it's like a hybrid, it's a club?
Correct.
Can you talk about that?
Sure.
And I see, because zero, transportation is not covered?
Correct.
Could you explain that?
Sure.
And are there any other hybrid club teams in here? Is it just squash?
Sure, so it is not a New York State Public High School sport. So it's not governed under our section. It's actually scheduled with our league organization locally. There are a couple, Bronxville, Briar Cliff, that are schools that are local in section one, that just happen to be a part of that. So my understanding is with the history of this, when it was added, initially, it was previously funded with rugby 100% by outside groups. And since then, we've come to pay for our coaching stipends and basic levels of equipment when necessary. But transportation has been provided primarily are actually by the families for those sports.
Okay. And then, oh, lastly, the fieldhouse.
Yes.
You had mentioned that. What, I think I've seen it a while ago. Right now, what is the fieldhouse used for? I know it's not in great shape.
Yeah.
And just curious.
Sure.
What it could be used for?
So when you walk in, there's lockers around the whole area. And then in the far left-hand side, there's a huge storage area full of football equipment. In the far right-hand side, it's a ton of lacrosse equipment. There's bathrooms in there, there's an ice machine, for lack of a better term. And it's been used primarily since I've been here, football's used it in the fall and lacrosse has used it in the spring for their locker room, for lack of a better term.
And is it boys and girls lacrosse or just?
Boys is using it.
Okay, got it.
I did reach out and ask our other teams if they wanted to and they didn't want a part of that, but they're interested in doing something different. So I just think, I look at it and it swishes away, like, you know, if I won the lottery tomorrow, just to be able to take it and do something with it. So it would be conducive to everybody and I think that just got to get creative with it potentially.
Did you mention something about community partnerships or are you brainstorming some ways of?
Yeah, I've had a lot of conversation.
Like some kind of fundraiser or something to?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I just look at, we just have this beautiful field and all these things that we went to our community for, right? So how can we get something done without having to go back to our community directly? And I've just had several conversations over my two years with people that will approach me and say, hey, I'm willing to support our, you know, A, B, or C. I think it's getting down what our needs are and we've talked about what that looks like, meaning what would we want this to be? And then what is the cost to do this? And looking to see, you know, locally, people that would want to get behind it.
And we've both had conversations with folks who had talked about wanting to support the field years ago. And this is a perfect project to potentially look to those community members that would be willing to support and help.
And it's just a goal, right? So if it takes a little time, takes a little time, but at least we'd have a vision and we know where we're headed and we'd love to see that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Other questions?
Thanks, guys.
You had mentioned in terms of, or we all sort of talked about donations and those sitting in, like, how much is that in a rough sense? Is there, is that a significant amount relative to the budget or?
Well, the two main sports that consistently I can see, because Donna, when I first started, printed the OT and I thought, is this overtime? I didn't know what it meant until Gabby even said OTHER. But you can, you can see the breakdown and what it's earmarked for because it has to be used for that. So every year, the RFA earmarks for the football jerseys. Ice from the ice garnets comes in. So those are the two main items that stay constant. Occasionally, like today, I had a community member reach out, ask me what are EIN numbers and what would it mean and how would I donate and not even asking what for, but just wanting to know the process. So it's, people understand there's a process and that it needs to go through this board and it needs to be adopted and it needs to be earmarked for what it's used. It can't just show up.
And then just going to the budget overall. If I'm doing my math right, the athletic department budget is, you know, like less than half a percent of the overall budget. Is that, I mean, is that typical? Is that what, you know, sort of is like a normal-ish number across school districts in Westchester or higher, lower? Just curious.
I don't know a direct answer to that, but I've worked in three different districts with athletic budgets and I think ours is competitive and appropriate. And if I didn't think it would fulfill our needs, I'd be coming to you to say, we need more money in A, B, or C. And if we, you know, if I ever, we look at some of these projects and I can take money and get creative, that's where I would rely on Gabby to say, Gabby, I think we're set with uniforms. Can we look at moving some money around where I need it differently? But I think for what we offer, you know, we're in good shape, in my opinion, from just my experiences as an athletic director for 17 years.
Anything else?
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
And facilities is next.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to let me present this. I do want to start off saying that it's, I wouldn't recognize most of you because I've never met you without a mask. So it is actually, it's actually pretty pleasant to be in a room and see smiles and faces. So it's a great milestone. So the, the facilities kind of happens behind the scenes. And with the backdrop of the RYE commitment, I think all the goals of the RYE commitment couldn't happen without a safe, clean, heated, cooled, well-ventilated building. So I kind of take pride and some honor in being part of providing that in the background. So I think I skipped one, sorry. So the, the budget this year that we're going through, hold on a second. Gabby, I think some of these. Here we, this is, I think I shuffled these around a bit, but this is the, I was going to start with the 20, what we're currently going through, the 21 budget year is kind of guided a lot by the capital work that's, that's ongoing and of course, Ida. So, so these two photos reflect some ongoing work that, what we're looking at is the high school boiler room that was eight feet underwater. Those are new burners and we've got them online. The last of the three boilers were only fired about two and a half weeks ago. So it was, it was a constant process starting in September between a temporary boiler and locating and sourcing material all while the building is operating. So the logistics of that, of parking in the, in front of the building and having trucks and cranes and all that stuff that have to hoist the old equipment out and the new equipment in was, was all happening while, a lot of the time while the building was occupied, keeping a functioning boiler while, while we're repairing the other boilers. So we were fortunate that we had some, some good contractors and team players and we got that done. The small example, the photo on the right is the, a fence that was washed away, the, the soil was gouged about two feet just from the rush of water coming down Route 1. So that's, that's Route 1 looking west, I guess. And the fencing was replaced and all those little things that were, they were big little things, but there were multiple little projects that we had to remediate. So all those costs and how, how that fits into the, the timing of everything else was, was a big challenge. So we had to be very cautious of what, I had a little more ambition of projects that I wanted to do with our staff and, you know, when buildings were open, but that was kind of derailed, so kind of guided by Ida this year. So I'm just going to go back to. So again, in our current year, it's a heavy focus on, on projects that we could do with our, our current staff, taking advantage of breaks, the Christmas break, the February break. I think the guys are, here's examples of real pride that they take in their building. The, this was the vestibule right outside the high school cafeteria that was done after, it was, the, it was trampled on working in the cafeteria, working on the third floor. It was just, that was like Grand Central Station, but like moments before we opened, they kind of restore it for a normal operating school building. And the photo on the right is the orchestra pit. That was, we, the high school crew and our new head custodian coordinated the removal of the pit, getting it ready for, for a show. It hasn't been painted in a number of years, but we took advantage of the school break and while we were here for some construction, they, they got the orchestra pit ready. That's obviously the before photo, but it's, 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 it's pretty and black and has glow-in-the-dark caution tape near the steps. So, so those are the kinds of things that we could focus on. And I think the, the, these are, these are projects that we have, that we could do with our staff with the skill level that they have and kind of empowering them to, to take care of these things to ultimately make the building look better, which I know that they enjoy doing, so.
Rob, I know Jen wants to interject and I do as well.
I was just going to say, I've been working in the orchestra pit recently, quite a lot, and it looks amazing. It definitely does not look like this picture.
Yeah, Jen has not joined the custodial staff. This is part of the Osborne fifth grade play.
Well, it doesn't really matter, but the point is that it looks fantastic. The floor is great. It's, it's, you know, everything's nice and even. It's all, it's, it just looks fantastic.
Right, so it's, it's one of those things that most of the time it's covered with, with a pit cover, but we knew months ago that when, when the next show was coming and the cover was going to be off, because it's a, it's a pretty involved process because it's multiple pieces and they're all clamped together and they have to be leveled. So we're like, if we're taking it off, we might as well take advantage of that. And I'm glad that everyone, all our crews across the buildings are, they, they share that eagerness and mentality that I have to kind of take advantage of.
And I just wanted to comment for our current and former Milton parents who are on the board and our Milton parents watching, that's what a Midland parents, that's what a Midland bathroom looks like now, which is very different from the bathrooms you may have seen in the past at Midland.
Right. So, so I included that photo because although it was a brand-new bathroom, like post-construction, if anyone's ever, you know, gone through construction, it's still like just filthy, right? Even though it's, it's all fully constructed. So going in there with that kind of deep cleaning and scrubbing every grout line is, is what, what they were doing, so.
And I also think it's important to mention that it's a bit of a learning curve too for our custodial staff. These are new materials that they haven't dealt with in the past. So retraining them to really be able to utilize their skills and whatever is needed to clean these new areas that they've never done before.
So here is, here's a photo in the center is the, if you recall earlier, Caitlin showed the finished product of the, of the IT closet. And this is, this was the work in progress, so I.
Caitlin would not allow that to be the finished product.
Right, but it, it kind of speaks to what, what the summer feels like, right? And it always seems like such a long time, but it's essentially six weeks of work that you're, you're trying to do like a year's worth of improvements. And so, you know, you could see it was a copy room and we didn't even have a chance to take the copy paper out before they're, they're pulling their runs in there because everyone is, you know, all the trades are overlapping and everyone's getting their work done. But I, but I will say it's, it's all like an orchestrated chaos and everyone has the same goal, which, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't do otherwise.
And that was six weeks with a broken foot.
Yeah, but I wasn't the one physically doing it, but yeah, it was, I was hopping along for, for a lot of the summer. So one, one of the things that is actually ongoing where I'm still, I gathered all the data for a facility assessment. So we're looking at all the facilities from, with, by a third party, the New York State School Facilities Association, they're looking at multiple, multiple criteria for, you know, for square footage, for, for tasks that need to be completed that might not be obvious, such as the field cover and how much, how many, you know, how much resource needs to go out there in terms of manpower when, when we have a storm coming, how often that might happen, how, how our departments overlap with the athletic department and what needs to be done prior to an event that is a custodial duty. So just understanding where, where staff is needed and assessing cleanliness levels, just kind of looking at it as, really as an independent audit. And so I'm thankful that that was, that was approved by the board so we can move forward that and determine where, where we can increase efficiency. Because I, I think, again, in the backdrop of all the capital work that's happened, there are some things that have changed. Some things might require more attention, some things might require less attention. There's areas that didn't have air conditioning before that we've added air conditioning. So there's additional preventive maintenance and filter changes on a unit that didn't exist before. However, it, it should also take into account areas that we have, that we had a waxed floor that no longer need to be waxed because we have an LVT floor, which doesn't require that. So looking at district-wide, how, how we handle the, the cleaning is something that is going to come out of this facility assessment. So as, as we get those results, I'm going to, I'm sure I'm going to provide an update about that work. So again, just to touch on that, this one photo and of the, of that cabling that was happening, I think anytime in, in any of the capital work that, that happened, we were always looking at what potential vectors there were for additional work that, that the capital work created an opportunity for. This is one that the IT department, you know, took advantage of with ceilings down and recable in a building. So how that building was selected was a result of, of the coordination with the capital work. And we do the same as well for whether it's burglar alarms or, or our security cameras just kind of looking at our facilities, what, what can we do now that it's open? And we did that in multiple places. So I think that, I think it was, it was great to have that, that opportunity. So again, the, the goals for, the goals for this upcoming budget is, again, I consider this a year of kind of reevaluation. I think there's, there's so many, the huge investment through the capital project is, is going to, it's going to make a material difference and already has on multiple spaces throughout, throughout the district. And that, that includes, you know, additional equipment, more simplified equipment, more efficient equipment, different lighting. So our, our tasks that we would have looked at over the, over the last few years of routine maintenance and preventive maintenance will, will have changed because we're not going around changing fluorescent light bulbs and ballasts because we have a lot of LED lighting. Our boilers are, there's new boilers at, at Milton. We've changed from steam to hot water at Midland. We have two new condensing boilers here, multiple HVAC equipment. The entire ventilation system at Midland is upgraded. So there's. So, there's a lot happening, and I do want to acknowledge that those changes are reflected into how I view the budget. So, it's not just assuming that there's going to be an increase, because utility costs are going up, but it should reflect some of the efficiencies that were built in and some of the reasons why the district embarked on the $80 million capital project. And again, as we...there's still phases to be completed with the capital project, and with each phase, it's...we're looking at what areas we're opening up and what coordination amongst internal departments can ultimately lead to more benefit to students and building users. So, here's the numbers. I'm not sure if anyone had a chance to go through with it. It's lengthy, but a lot of it is utilities, because it's broken down by building. I think you'll see that some of the largest increases are electric costs, and anyone who's got a Con Ed bill can attest to that. A 20% increase is not an unreasonable expectation for an increase. I'm hoping it's...I'm hoping we've peaked, but that's still a huge unknown. So, I think the timing of some of the energy-efficient measures that were implemented is good in terms of saving dollars. So, the current budget has...you'll see some decreases in equipment cost or equipment lines, and that's reflected to the current budget that we're in. There were approved equipment purchases, and I've been struggling to even create a purchase order for a vehicle that we know we needed to replace. We need to replace a pickup with a plow that is aging. If you recall, last year, I had a photo of an old rusty vehicle that we disposed of. But there...the vehicle that we want specific for the school is not even available, and I think Ford, as well as GM, put a hold on new orders for these base model vehicles. So, I'm struggling to finalize that. But if there's going to be a delay in that, I need to reflect that in the budget, that we're not, you know, we're unable to make that purchase, so I'm not going to budget for something that I haven't been able to finalize yet. So, there's additional repair costs that I've taken into account for our current fleet, all with the...but still constantly evaluating how we're treating some of our aged equipment and at what point are you investing in something that's not worth it anymore. So, it's certainly...from a budgeting perspective, with all the delays and supply chain issues, there's other considerations that never really played into some of the budget creation in years past. So... And again, moving down the line, there's some facility heat repair budgets that I've kept flat, and that is also reflecting that we've made some upgrades. We have some brand-new equipment, some of it's still under warranty. I don't anticipate needing any repairs on that, so I did want to reflect that in the budget. So...But again, and I think everything will probably be turned, you know, turned upside down next year, and the numbers are going to be all over the place, and I fully anticipate that, when I have a year of data to see where fuel usage has gone, how much efficiency we have built in, and how much can be reflected in a future budget. Any questions on...
Anyone? Do you want to...so, I was, again, just going to say thank you, because I mean, it's great...I feel like we often hear, or more often, we've heard so much about the capital project's ongoing updates and how that's working. And, you know, obviously, that's all eventually playing into what this budget is. And so, to hear that there's efficiencies that we're kind of already starting to be able to see a little bit from that construction is really wonderful. I mean, it just...it's knowing how dated a lot of the infrastructure was for our buildings and looking at where we are just from the standpoint of costs from around the world, how that's changing, that we're in a much better position as a result of that work. So, thank you all for that. Were there other facilities...anyone else have other questions?
No, thanks for all the detail you've answered. Most of the questions were commented as you went through it, so it's fantastic. I'm really...I'm curious a little bit about the electric usage, because it seems like the increase is mostly just cost of what we're paying for it. But do we have...can we track what we actually use in terms of kilowatt-hours and what that would have been, you know, given all the investment in efficient equipment? I know that might be a random question, but...
So, the kilowatt usage is on all the utility bills, which we can't track. The only reason that might be...it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, because if there's new equipment and there's increased consumption, although there might be some efficiencies, there might be some areas that will throw off the numbers. So, we can't just look at the kilowatt-hours and say, we've saved this percentage, because it would have to be offset by the additional. And that can be figured out, but you would have to have, like, watt readers on each appliance.
Each day, yeah. That's what I was kind of...
And then compare degree days, because, you know, if there were...if it's an air conditioning system and there were hotter days for more of September than a previous year, you'd have to take that into account. It's a really, really...it's possible. It's a really difficult calculation to do well. But there is, you know, we could certainly take a stab at it.
No, I don't want to waste a lot of time, and I get how complicated that process is. I was curious if there was any...if you had anything, but I don't want people to spend more time and effort doing analytics when we've got so much work to do on that.
Yeah, but there are some simple ones, especially in the shoulder months, where there's not so much heating and not so much air conditioning. You have to pair those, because that one is a little less influenced by, you know, environmental conditions.
Yeah.
So...
Thanks.
I just have to say thank you again. Like, looking at the pictures, that I just had this mental journey where I remember the first days of COVID, you know, in spring of 19, and we were all home, and the teachers were working so hard to transition to remote...there was so much happening, and I feel like my first thought was your team, you know, these guys who were, you know, heading into the shutdown. They were just going in every night and starting these new cleaning, you know, without any masks. We just didn't have the information, and they just...there was such a dedication that came out of your team. And then when I look at the journey from there and what you guys have accomplished, you know, with the capital project, and jumping out to me on this budget isn't like a next-year budget thing, but it's the 1.5 million charge for Ida and putting a number to the work and the effort that your team put in to just bringing us back to a neutral point while continuing to manage the capital bond, while continuing to bring in all the new cleaning techno...I mean, it's just the amount that your team has absorbed. I'm just...I feel overwhelmed with the pictures you showed and the numbers on the page here. So, I just had to start with a huge thank you, because it's amazing. And it's all the teams, all the administrative teams, but at this moment, I'm struck with your team. So, thank you for that. And my question is really kind of just on the equipment piece at the beginning of the budget, just, you know, like a lot of items. It's so lumpy over time. Is that what you're talking about with some of the new vehicles? And, you know, some of the things are kind of just dropping out to zero, so it's just a super lumpy category. So, maybe just helping me think about that as a category over time?
Sure. So, a piece of equipment such as a vehicle with a plow, fully outfitted with the lights and backup horns is probably close to $50,000. So, that would be a very lumpy year, where you have to purchase one of those and multiple auto scrubbers, which are upwards of $20,000. That's the machine that we, you know, with the scrubbing pad that cleans the floors. But they have a useful life of close to 20 years. So, it would be, you know, that's a major purchase that is really kind of based on evaluation of your equipment, so it would be very lumpy. So, last year, there were two vehicles that we identified for replacement, and I'm hoping some of the factories have changed their timelines, so we're able to make one of those purchases, but we're still kind of band-aiding some of our equipment. So, I don't know if I've answered your question.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. That's what I expected, but it's just...it's clearly...that's where you had the most kind of amount of changes outside of, obviously, the increase in electric utilities. So, my other question really is how we should be thinking about kind of our direct cost exposure to oil, but obviously, the energy sector in and of itself, you know, just continuing to go up. But if we stay...if oil's staying, you know, very elevated, I know that reads through to the other energy costs, but just how you think about that versus the numbers on the page here, just with our current global environment?
So, when we do make a projection for oil, it is...there's...it's an educated guess. You know, some of the global factors, it's hard to be...again, you kind of look at some trends, kind of, and take a stab at it.
Well, I see the oil...I mean, like, the fuel oil itself is a very small piece of our budget. So, like, our direct exposure to oil is low, as far as, like, we have steam boilers, we have...it's not necessarily a high input cost, looking at the budget. Is that accurate?
So, yes, the exposure to oil is greatest at Midland, because that's the only building that doesn't have full gas. Con Ed, there was a moratorium on gas. You know, we're hoping one day that'll be lifted, and we could run on gas, because that it's a more stable fuel source. Unfortunately, as a result of Ida, the gas service could not be turned back on here until all the burners were on. So, it's only the last couple of weeks that we've burned gas. So, the temporary boiler was an oil-fired boiler. The oil burners that we got are...that we temporarily installed to get one of our main steam boilers functioning at the high school was an oil-fired burner, because that's what was available. So, unfortunately, in a very high oil year, because there was a huge spike this heating season as compared to last, it did...that timing was unfortunate, because it was a more expensive fuel source, and we just had...we didn't have an option. So, currently, the high school runs dual fuel. If there was a spike in natural gas, we do have the option to go to fuel oil. I don't anticipate that in the near future, but we do have that option. We...the building is actually...there's a contract with Con Ed, because we're a huge consumer of natural gas, so when there's a weather event that's like below 15 degrees or something, that we were required to switch to oil. So, we have a dual-fuel service. But we do have the option to do it for savings, which never really comes to fruition. So, but I will definitely share your compliments to the staff. I'm sure they'll appreciate that. So, I can't take credit for all of it, because I came only for the last year and a half, so a lot of that work...so, kind of points to the fact that I've joined a crew of dedicated men and women that I'm happy to be a part of, so. So, the last slide that I do want to speak about is the transfer to capital goals. And again, these are ongoing. I believe some of it was touched upon with Caitlin's presentation regarding the Salto locks and the timing of it. There's...the locks are on hand, kind of waiting to come in, and it's just a function of coordinating with the contractor. Doors are one of those items that have tremendous lead items, is a tremendous lead item. So, they're coming in a piecemeal, so we've come up with a schedule and an implementation plan where we could do wings at a time when those doors are in. Thankfully, they are coming in slowly, so we're working on that. But that is...that is one of the items that we identified as a goal in our transfer to capital with last year, knowing that there was going to be...it was going to straddle more than one budget year, because it was a project that was related to capital, but it was also something that you...something that just required a lot more time. And as I've kind of walked around the building, I always have my phone out and taking pictures and kind of taking note of what things are taking a lot of attention, and those are the projects that I put on my radar for something that we can handle with a...if we had some funds through this transfer to capital. So, here's two examples of the library roof at the media center in the high school. That's what it looks like when you're on the science wing, looking down. So, it's certainly a problematic roof that I love to handle. But again, this is something that also requires coordination with some of the capital project. If there's any scope in the library, that probably requires...that may require some change of some ventilation equipment that's located on the roof, we'd want to coordinate that. We don't want to put a new roof and then start making a hole in it for a new piece of equipment. So, although we might be ready, maybe there's some timing issues, and we might want to continue with some Band-Aids and hold off when that work is happening, and we do that in conjunction. So, the list is larger than the available funds, but again, we're constantly documenting and reevaluating and say which one, you know, perhaps something has changed and has made something a higher priority. But there was something on the list that I actually deprioritized that I had last year, and that was some high-water issues that were happening below the stage in the PAC. And thankfully, one of the projects identified in Phase 1 in the capital project was a six-foot-deep sump pit with two pumps connected to our emergency generator panel, and it changed some of the dynamics with the water table below, and we get less water coming into that tunnel. So, I think that happened to be an ancillary benefit that we didn't anticipate, but it was a very welcome one. So, again, these are...these projects are a lot of internal discussion, overlap with other departments, such as the PA system. As wiring is going in and ceilings are open, that might be a project that it's just super efficient and less costly to do now, even though there might be something else on the list, but it's just, you know, it just makes sense to do. So, those are all decisions, you know, that we kind of make collectively.
So, if I could just add a little bit of background in terms of transfer to capital. As a function of the budget that we're asking the community to vote on, there's a line at the very end that's called "transfer to capital." So, under normal circumstances, when you're not working on bond work or a capital project, what larger projects that don't...that are not covered under the operating expense or the operation of the facilities department typically will land in your transfer to capital line, which is a commitment that we make to larger projects. And that dollar amount can fluctuate from year to year. Typically, we live in the $700,000 to $750,000 mark. We take that money as out of our operating. We transfer it into the capital fund, hence "transfer to capital," another one of the funds that we operate, and then we dedicate those funds to these larger projects that Rob talks about. And these are ongoing conversations, as he has said, that we then figure out what we're going to be able to accomplish in a particular school year. Now, knowing that we had the $80 million bond project as something that was at the forefront, what we determined, which was also what we had talked about last year when we came to the board with...as part of the budget, was using those funds to complement and to expand upon what was being covered as part of the capital project. So, talking about the Salto locks, there were many doors and identified... locks, there were many doors and identified as part of the bond project that were going to be touched, that would be paid out of the capital fund. But it did leave behind some doors that weren't included. So the transfer to capital was to complement and complete the work that wasn't being covered in the capital project. So we're strategically trying to use those funds to pick up where items or areas that the bond didn't cover to then complete work that just made sense because we had the opportunity in an area that was open or there was scope that we could pick up using transfer to capital monies. Does that help to try to?
And what, can you remind us of the amount this year?
So this year, we have $500,000 scheduled.
Less than normal.
Yes. Only because we also know that because the, the bond scope is so large, the ability for us to expend an additional $775,000 or a million dollars would be difficult. And it gave us opportunity to lower that dollar amount going into the next school year.
You know, I'd asked Caitlin about the idea, the potential to move some of the technology in the basement of the high school higher that we had talked about after Ida. Is that something that is in the planning stages or what is the process?
So as part of the replacement, anything that we had the ability to raise, we, we did. Some of the gas valves that feed all three boilers, and there's multiple controls on the gas valves that once they're submerged, they're, they have to be discarded. So we were able to, to raise that about eight feet on the three boilers because the gas main was in the ceiling. So the T was lower and we were able to, to raise that. Unfortunately, they are steam boilers and, and it's just the nature of the way they need to function. The steam is made at a low point and it rises through the building. So a lot of the controls and I could actually have, I can show you that photo again. It, some of the components such as this, this is the burner and this is basically a big cast iron pot. The flood level was probably about here. Those components have to remain where they are. Because as you can see here, here's a big steam line. So when the steam is generated and it starts to distribute through the building, that just happens to, it has to happen at a lower point. So, but with that in mind, anything that we were able to raise, we did as, as much as we could. This blue panel is some of the controls. These feet are kind of levitating in the air. So we got it up about 24 inches higher than, higher than we did. And even speaking with the contractor, it was kind of, we had to like coordinate, you know, the structure to support it because he, you know, he never did it before. But I said, anything that we could gain, our goal is to gain it. So, you know.
Thank you. And I, I think at the time, some of the network, like the technology infrastructure was a little bit lower and at risk. Is that stuff, was, was that impacted and replaced and moved higher? Or is that in the same location?
The, anything that could have been raised was raised. Some of the control points that, it's an electronic device that's mounted lower because it's taken a temperature on a pipe and we couldn't move it. It wasn't. But the, a lot of the brains for the building management system are in, actually live in, in some of the IT closets, which are not in the, in the floodline there.
Oh, okay. So those weren't.
Yeah, there were electric, electrical panels that were submerged that we, we still have not, I mean, moving the electrical panels above is, is not feasible at this moment. We, we are going to look at what that, but that would be a pretty significant undertaking in cost.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, thank you very much. No other questions?
All good.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the next, we, we just wanted to revisit the, a few of the overall slides because of some new numbers that have come in and some adjustments that we've made in the proposed budget as we've had conversations with the board and we've had conversations internally looking at more efficiencies and looking at ways to potentially look at reductions in the annual, the increase. So we're just going to sort of quickly go through, but on an overview, if you just look at the, the first, the, the approved budget of $94,237,000 and the proposed of 99,477, if you recall, that number was over six when we came to you a few weeks ago with some changes which we'll highlight a bit now. That's now, the budget to budget increases down to 5.56. And it is a tax cap compliant budget. So we, we did have some significant conversations around staffing with Erin and Tricia about looking at the potential of reducing the, the request of the .5 staff developer and .5 teacher for special education. And we feel that as we look at the priorities in the budget and moving things forward, we do believe that there are ways we can continue the staff development efforts with our contractors at GNR Consulting to help with the staff development support, as well as, as we're hiring our new staff developer for K2 Literacy, we're looking at candidates with strong special education background that can help fill a bit of that void. And looking at teacher evaluations, it was certainly something that we want to try and be able to do for efficiency sake and for not impacting instruction, instructional time with kids. But we really felt like we needed to find some additional ways to, to lower that increase, which turns out to be about $100,000 reduction in the budget proposal. Gab, I'll let you take the other two.
Sure.
Since we now know those.
Yep. So when I was building the budget, the teacher's retirement employer contribution rate was an estimated rate. They typically give you a range to start out. And then as, obviously, as the process continues, they then finalize the rate around this time of year. In doing so, I typically conservatively budget at the higher end of the range that they provide. And then I adjust for when they finalize the rate. So I budgeted at 10.5%. The rate has now been set at 10.29, allowing me to reduce what the expected expenditure is for next year for TRS, which allowed me to reduce the budget. And I feel comfortable with reducing it by $100,000. So every little bit helps there. The other adjustment that was made was a reduction in the debt service expenditure. Again, this is related to the debt associated with, or the increase, I should say, going into next year is related to the debt associated with our current bond projects. Knowing that we have delayed the new additions and what we expected even in this year, right? Like, so what we had projected to have completed by this time going into summer of '21, right? Yeah, '21. And now going into summer of '22, our expenditures have slowed down, if you will, because we've been delayed. So the borrowing or the anticipated borrowing that's, that is scheduled to happen next year has also slowed down, allowing me to decrease what the expenditure is related to the debt service payment by $275,000. I wish I could take the credit for this, but if you remember, we work with fiscal advisors. So clearly, these are figures and numbers that I'm checking with them in making these changes and reductions, and in this case, a reduction to the budget. So we were able to do that as well.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So is, is there an expectation that we will be borrowing more through next year still to cover costs of projects that are ongoing? I know we're slowing down on that new piece to take a breath, but are there, future borrowing is expected for which we haven't set an interest rate on yet?
For the '22, '23 school year?
Yes.
No. There's no additional borrowing that has not been accounted for.
Well, so, but this, this estimate assumes some additional borrowing or no? Have we, have we issued all the bonds and set all the bonds?
No.
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 So is the rate that we're assuming for borrowing also increasing, given what's going on economically and with?
It could potentially, yes. Right now, we're doing short-term borrowing. We're doing BAMS. We're not doing bonds. The strategy was to do multiple BAMS until the final borrowing, which would then be converted into a bond.
Okay. And do we have a sense of the, for next year's operating costs with the BAMS?
BAMS, uh-huh.
BAMS. I would just like to know if the interest rate, it is, all indications are the interest rates will be rising.
Correct.
So making sure that with this estimate, we are accounting for that.
Uh-huh, yes. And we are actually already having conversations around changing our strategy. So maybe instead of doing an, an additional ban borrowing, we would actually convert to bonds sooner. Also taking into account that next year, or going into the '23, '24 school year, some older debt will be dropping off significantly. So it may be an opportunity to then bond some of the already banned borrowing to try to level off what we would have expected as another increase in borrowing going forward. We can talk about that a little, yeah.
Helpful. So, but it sounds like this, this decrease is due to decreased expected borrowings.
Correct.
And at this point, we're, do you, it, do you know if that anticipated rate, if we've assumed an increase in rate or if we're assuming it flat to where we currently are? Just so I can understand the number.
So yes, we did assume that there is an increase in rate.
Okay.
We are taking that into consideration as part of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next summary slide just shows the adjustments and where that puts us with the overall.
Correct.
Expenditure. So it shows it with the reduced.
Salary benefits and debt service.
Yep.
So categories one, two, and 11, just so you can, if you're so inclined to look at this previously, those are where those reductions would be housed. And then how that translates into the tax levy increase. So that also now has reduced to 3.97%. And an estimated tax rate per thousand has also decreased to now 686.31.
And Gabby, additional unknown information. Where are we?
So I, so typically what happens before we will come back and ask the board to adopt the budget, I expect a little bit of tweaking around state aid. In particular, BOSI's aid typically will change between now and then, which may then impact, once again, a little bit of tweaking to these numbers. ERS is.
Assessment growth, all that's done.
I'm sorry?
Assessment growth.
Yeah. Well, no, the taxable assessments, that literally is a number that changes to the very last second from when you are then asked to adopt the warrant. So that too could potentially change even after the budget is voted on because that taxable assessment is really what drives the estimated tax rate per thousand.
And from the state budget perspective, I, I did check this morning with our legislative friends that we should expect to see the one-house budgets from the Assembly and the Senate released next week, which will really kind of tell the story of if anything's going to shift, what that's going to be in the annual budget. And, and the expectation of coming from my conference that I just was at in Albany is that there will probably be an early budget agreement. So long before April 1st.
Oh, nice.
Which might be extraordinary.
Helpful. Yes.
Just in time for pothole season, Jane.
And then the only other areas where we would obviously keep an eye on is sections. Our kindergarten enrollment is in full swing. So that too will, you know, potentially cause some tweaking on the budget side for staffing.
And the next slide, if there are any questions.
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to ask out loud that the .5 teacher for evaluations, I know it's, we're looking at that to see how that, how we can utilize current staff or do it a different way than what we were originally planning. But that, I'm assuming will continue to be an assessment and we will see that impact. And, and if that is necessary to look at for the next year's budget.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's the real key.
Yeah.
And we've had these conversations before. We had the table building the, the therapeutic support service program.
Right.
We pushed that off because of the COVID issues with the budget two years ago. And this is one of those things that we would absolutely keep an eye on with, with the notion of we could be back next year with that, as we did with the therapeutic program.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And if you recall at the last meeting, we did speak about the lunch reserve. And this is a tax neutral proposition. So there's no cost to the taxpayers on this and no impact on the budget. But the, the community does have to approve it. And this was the allocation of the $400,000 for the HVAC in the high school cafeteria. So this is the actual language that we did not have yet at the, the last, when we proposed the budget a few weeks ago.
So it will be a second question.
Right.
On the ballot come budget vote day, that is essentially asking our community to allow us to use funds that already exist as part of the lunch fund reserve to contribute to the HVAC project taking place in the high school cafeteria that essentially supports the $80 million bond project. We have the ability to use those funds because it's direct cafeteria funds that would go back into supporting that program.
Gabby, if that should be approved, when would the district look to start doing the work?
It, the work is already underway. So again, this would be something similar to what we're talking about with the delay in payments and completion of the work. This would then allow us to use those funds to complement the $80 million.
Can you give me example of what the lunch fund reserves are typically used for?
So we have the ability to use the lunch fund reserves without coming to the community to ask for permission for smaller expenditures. So for example, when we have to replace a stove at Milton School, if we have to do the floor in the high school cafeteria, which we've done, we want to add a servery. So one of the things we did during COVID is we added mobile carts to the cafeteria here at the high school. That is something that you can purchase using lunch fund reserve monies to be able to do that. But when it gets to significant capital expenditures where it benefits the cafeteria, but it's considered a capital project, that's when you have to go to the community and ask for permission.
Do you know what that, what the significant threshold is?
When.
At least $400,000.
Right. And when you're talking about contract work, where you're, you're, you're calling in an outside contractor for a bid as opposed to buying a piece of equipment, that's really where the line is drawn, where it requires approval.
So it's not like a, just a monetary level, like number?
No. I would say a significant infrastructure change.
Yeah.
And as always, for budget comments and questions, the Board of Education email address, my address, Gabby's email address, and there is always feedback@rise schools.org. So just to recap where we are. So our next step on the budget journey is next Saturday, right here in the middle school multipurpose room at 9:30 a.m., is the Community Budget Cafe. We have started promoting. So, just to recap where we are, so our next step on the budget journey is next Saturday, right here in the middle school multipurpose room at 9:30 a.m., is the Community Budget Cafe. We have started promoting and created some beautifully designed flyers for the event, and sent it to the local media.
They've also been on social media.
It's also been on our social media channels, yes. Insta, Instagram, and Facebook, and.
Twitter.
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 March 22nd would be the budget adoption by the board, May 3rd is the budget hearing, and May 17th is the budget vote and trustee election.
Great. Well, I, thank you so much for that update. It's really, I mean, anytime we can make some adjustments where we're helping to alleviate the burden on the taxpayer, it's always a good thing, and it's wonderful that the numbers came in the way they did for TRS, and I think it's appropriate for us to be looking at, you know, what are things that we can table for a little bit, given the year that we're in, and, and the, the increase that we're seeing because of the, the capital projects that we're doing.
And thanks to the board members, a number of you have joined these legislative conversations, where we've talked about the budget and the impact on our community, and it's been very helpful. It's, they get tired of hearing from me, and having you all there with me is incredibly powerful, so thank you. I know it eats a lot of time, and we've had a lot of them, and, but just, it's much appreciated, so thanks a lot.
All right. So, I'll just open it up if anyone from the public has any questions about any of the budget presentations that we've given. Seeing none, I think we can move on to our consent agenda. Oh, no, we can't. Now I need to open it up for non, sorry. It's a, it's been a long night. Open it up to hearing in the public. So, we welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously, and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member, or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryschools.org. Okay, and we have no public comments for this evening. So, now we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tom Stein, seconded by Chris Repetto. We'll quickly go through each of the sections to see if there's any other additional comments. So, consent agenda general. Fiscal construction.
Can we just talk through the two budget transfers on the fiscal?
Yeah, I'm actually, Susan and Rob are still here. So, the facilities one is the leftover having to do with the fuel that we needed to run the temporary boiler. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it is, we are experiencing, like everybody else, increased costs and supplies, so it's really a reshuffling of funding to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of our supplies in the building from a facility standpoint. I'm going to ask Susan to add a little color. Yes, please. Having to do with the uniform.
The, when we had to pay for the helmets initially, Jill, after post-July 1st, we took money out of our uniform code to cover that cost. So, that was an expense that we didn't foresee, obviously, in our budget planning, so we shuffled along, and to cover some uniforms that we needed specifically, modified girls' softball, modified girls' lacrosse, and some of the things I referenced, we were able to move some fundings where I had saved in another code. Makes sense?
Professional appointments. Classified appointments. And special education. Okay? All those in favor of the consent agenda? Six, nothing. I do just want to point out one gift. On the consent agenda tonight, we approved a $12,000 gift from the Michael P. DeVito Memorial Scholarship Foundation to support the Michael DeVito Memorial Scholarship Fund. We also approved a $5,550 gift, dollar gift, from the Osborne School PTO to support the National Circus Arts Project at Osborne School. And I think that was all of the gifts. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, now we will move on to presentation and discussion two, which is three policies that are up for discussion. We had them for information last meeting, and now we'll have them for any additional discussion or questions that the board has.
The policies presented to you tonight are, as presented previously, there were no comments that were received from board members. Seeing none, they will go ahead and move forward to the consent agenda for next time. We do have a policy meeting in two weeks, so we'll be coming back with a fresh new set of policies for everyone to take a look at soon.
Excellent. Okay. Any communications to and from the board?
None.
Nope. Okay. So, I think that brings us to our adjournment. So, can I have a motion to adjourn? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein, all those in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you for joining us, and we will be right back here on March 22nd for our next board meeting. Have a good night, thank you.